So you have the printed out.
Chad, where did you fly out of? Carbona? Telecops?
Flora International.
How, what's up there?
Well, I was working at FLA, at NAO on Friday, and then he was there for pilots to me because that's where they have the ag operation.
Yeah.
And so I went over there to see the new helicopter that he was going to fly in. And the owner says, if you fold your deck, he said, no, we'll take your blood from it.
Oh, my gosh.
That was fantastic.
Was it really?
It flew over my father's farm. That's who took the video last fall.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's pretty good.
Did you dress up? Yeah.
Things have been happening?
Call the regular April board meeting to order a please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Erica.
Present.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
J D S Chad.
Present.
Desha.
Yes.
Steve.
Present.
Okay, at this time, I would like to recognize any visitors that have notified the board to address the board.
Let's address the board, please.
Yes, ma'am. Please come forward to the microphone. The Unit 40 Board welcomes comments from our community at this time. Speakers are limited to five minutes, and we will notify the speaker when there's one minute remaining in their allotted time. We ask that all speakers identify themselves and share their information in a respectful and courteous manner without the use of profanity and personal attacks. Please keep in mind that your audience may include children, even those viewing from home. We appreciate your anticipated cooperation and welcome any comments that will benefit our goal of supporting the best education for the students of Unit 40.
My name is Michaela Overbeck. First, I'd like to ask anyone who came here as a parent in our community to raise their hand to me. Okay, I've got a few. Good evening, members of the board, faculty, and concerned members of our community. My name is Michaela Overbeck. We met once before on November 18th. And I come before you tonight not only as a parent and citizen, but as someone who believes that the safety, dignity, and well-being of our children must never be compromised. It is with a heavy heart and an unwavering resolve that I speak today about the deeply troubling decision to employ an individual who has been indicated, not merely accused, indicated for child abuse. Let us be clear. An indication means that a credible body has found enough evidence to believe abuse likely occurred. This is not hearsay. It is not a rumor. It is a formal conclusion, often made by Child Protective Services after a serious and sobering investigation. And yet, despite this, we now find this person to still be entrusted with the care, education, and emotional influence over our children. This decision sends a chilling message that the safety of our children is negotiable, that risk is acceptable, that convenience, staffing shortages, or second chances somehow outweigh the paramount duty to protect our students. I want to believe that you made this decision with some rationale or perhaps with legal constraints or considerations we're not yet privy to, though I've asked many times. But I ask you now, what rationale could possibly justify this level of risk? What policy, what precedent, what paper trail could ever outweigh a child's right to feel safe and protected in their school? We are not here to conduct a trial. We are not asking for vengeance. We are asking for vigilance. We are demanding that the people who shape our children's minds do not come with shadows cast by investigations of harm. Trust once lost is difficult to regain. I know every morning when I put my kid on the bus, I don't know who I can trust anymore. And many, and today, many of us feel betrayed. I don't know if you guys have seen the internet. People are pretty upset. We deserve transparency. We deserve accountability. And most importantly, our children deserve safety. I hope we can all agree on that. I urge you, not just as a board, but as a fellow human being, to reconsider this decision, and parents probably, or maybe even grandparents, aunts, uncles. Rescind Renee Green's employment. Conduct a full public review and show us that the words "child first" actually means that, and it's not just printed in your mission statement. Because if we can't count on our schools to protect our children, who can we count on? Now, I'd like to give some of my own account of what's happened, a little rundown here. Since August of 2024, I have spoken countless times with Mr. Andrew Johnson. He has urged me to remain quiet, and I have for eight months. I thought maybe someone would do the right thing for me, my child. He's refused to answer my questions. He has seemingly portrayed to me that this situation is a nuisance to him. That's how I feel. I genuinely feel as though our children are not safe at Unit 40 because of this, and they are certainly not safe in Ms. Renee Green's classroom. For eight months, Unit 40 has chosen to continue the employment of Renee Green. They saw the same video I saw. And they have made it clear that it is not a concern for them that a grown woman stepped on my child intentionally and bruised him. For eight months, Andrew Johnson and Unit 40 have decided to keep this from public knowledge. They did not inform parents of the investigation of Renee Green or the implications it had. They simply did not prioritize our children. I will not stop seeking justice for my child and for all of the children of parents who have come forward about Renee Green's inappropriate behavior and for the victims who may not have a voice at all. Because those of you that don't know, there are disabled children in that school that are nonverbal. I will push until I can push no further. Andrew Johnson, Unit 40 School Board, I am deeply disappointed that you do not prioritize our children's safety in the same way. I sincerely hope you can admit that a bad decision was made to continue Renee Green's employment, and that it is never too late to make the right decision in order to prioritize the safety of our children. I need to add a couple of things.
Your five minutes are, have expired.
I'm sorry. Let me take my five minutes. I'll take her five minutes if that works.
You can have your five minutes, but.
Oh, would you have. Do you want to read the testimonies for me? Great. Go on record that I'm not being illiterate when coming on. Anonymous member 782 said this.
My name is Brittany Barnes. I am sharing testimonies that have been shared on social media by other concerned members of the community.
So this is testimony that you've recorded or you've taken.
No, that parents, that other parents have shared with me.
So.
Other parents have come forward and spoken about abuse from this teacher.
Okay, so if they have testimony, they may bring the testimony forward.
I've been given permission. I've been given permission.
We cannot have you share other people's testimony. I'm sorry about that. You can share your own testimony, but not others.
It's on, yeah, it's public.
We won't argue about this. You cannot share someone else's testimony.
Okay. I'd like to ask some questions. What are you going to do about this?
It's not a question-answer session, and matters that regard people's employment are handled not in an open forum.
So if we are not allowed to ask questions as parents, what is our point in being at these meetings if we can't advocate for our children?
It's not an open forum.
It's an open meeting.
The board, but it is not an open forum.
I would like the board to consider what the limit is that our children are able to be hurt and disciplined in a trusted adult that worked for the school system before it is too far.
I have a testimony that says 30 years ago. 30 years ago, Renee Green restrained a child to a chair and put him in the corner. 30 years ago.
We can't take anonymous testimony.
Don't, but it's on my screen.
Do you have your own personal testimony?
My personal testimony is that my son is a student in this classroom. I was not made aware that there were allegations against his teacher at any point in time. I have now been aware, due to a public forum, not the school district, not the superintendent, that there is an indicated case of abuse by my son's teacher. And as a parent, I am now having to put his safety over his education and what his IEP states. I was also told when speaking with the principal this morning that if I refuse to send him to school, that his IEP would be void by non-attendance. When I questioned the matter and was told by another concerned parent that walk-in services were an option, I asked the principal at Eastside if that was an option, and I was then told, after being told his IEP would be void from not attendance, that yes, walk-in services would in fact be a question. But that was not an option that was brought to me by the principal until I brought it up. Another concern I have with this district that my child's safety and education is not being prioritized.
That would, thank you. Does anyone else want to address the board? Right. We will review all of this in closed session, whatever you bring to us, but we're not having an open discussion on personnel matters in open session.
Okay. My name is Jonathan Hobler. I also have two children in Ms. Renee's, Ms. Renee Green's class. They are both nonverbal, and they can't speak at all. Most we can get from one of them is baby and dad. That's the extent of their communication. They can't defend themselves if something's going on. They can't report it to me. Now, I talked to the principal this morning. What concerns me the most is the principal told me that this was not during a one-on-one thing. There was another adult around, so that means somebody was not doing their job keeping their eye out. At least one adult around. Second, it was right outside the principal's office from what I can understand. But the principal's are remaining vigilant. She's telling me that they're going to go into the classes, and the assistant principal goes in the classes, and there's multiple people that go into the classes. Cameras aren't in the classrooms. The easy way to solve this problem, put a camera in the classroom, let parents have access to those cameras. You guys got a big enough budget, take it away from football, throw in a camera in each room, you got the problem solved. Then you never have to have these discussions again. It's an easy fix to it. Another easy fix to it, be more open, be transparent. You guys are hired to do a job. Give our kids a good education, take care of them. You don't want to tell us the truth? Fine. According to FERPA laws, we are allowed to see recordings that are taken part of in the school. There's none in the classrooms, but there's some in the hallways, the gymnasium, and outside. Inside the hallways is where this took place. So what's stopping every parent here from filing a FERPA request or a FOIA request and spending hours combing through it? Right now, I'm a stay-at-home dad. You could give me every copy of every file from every hallway, every angle, and I'll spend the next three months going over it. I'll tell you if she's done something to somebody else. I'll tell you if some of your teachers have done something to anybody else. But you're sitting here and ignoring it for months at a time? I wasn't notified that she was being investigated, and I have two kids that are special needs. Why was I not informed of this decision? Why was I not informed that she was allowed to continue teaching my children, knowing that she has been not only accused, but found ready evidence that she did abuse a child? Now, could any of you imagine sending your kid to school thinking that this teacher's going to take care of my kid? She's special needs. They're going to help her. Because I'm not going to lie, you guys have helped my kids tremendously. They have done so much over the last few months. But now do I even know if they're going to be safe when they go in? Would you feel comfortable sending your kid in with a teacher that was accused of hitting a student, hurting them, sending them to the hospital to get x-rays? Would any of you send your kids into there? Because I don't think you would. I think you'd be sitting right here where we are, but because you're getting a paycheck from the government, local government, you're going to keep your mouth shut. I understand, I understand wanting to say, wanting to keep your district looking good. I get that. That's how we get funding so we can give a better education. You want to make yourself better? Open up. Say, hey, we messed up. We hired somebody who screwed up. That's how you get more people to trust in you. Keeping, not talking about it, disclosing it to parents that, hey, there's a possibility that your child may be being taught by an abuser, but we're just going to keep letting it go? What is it? Because she's got a couple of years until retirement, so you're just hoping to coast her along, get her out, and then she's not your problem anymore? You can solve the problem, and she won't be a problem right now. Stop trying to save face. Just do what needs to be done. If there's nothing to hide, I'll submit a FOIA request to the school district. I'll comb through every bit of footage that you have. You know how many more instances I'm going to find that you haven't told us about? Thank you. And I was, I was told by the principal specifically to ask you, Mr. Johnson, are school recording, security recordings part of student records?
We have a website that handles FOIA.
That's not my question. Are security record, are security footages during, during school operation, are they considered student records? Because you can't deny a FERPA request through that.
That's what it say. I would answer your question tonight. She said, meet with me, and we'd have some conversation about that.
Well, we can have a conversation right now, but you don't want to give the answer out in public.
Sounds about right. This is my experience for eight months, guys.
You could say you can talk to me, but you could jump in your truck or car or whatever and leave as soon as it's over. How do I know you're going to stick around? You can't give these people a straight answer. How I know you're going to stay after and give me a straight answer?
Set up a meeting with my secretary. Come in, and we'll talk about it.
Oh, I know. But, oh, that's fine, but it just shows, goes to show that you can't even talk about a FOIA request or a FERPA request in open discussion. Because, let's be honest, you don't want us to see the camera footage.
This time is for you to address the board. It is not open dialogue. You may set up an appointment.
I am addressing the board. This is what you guys are here to listen to.
Actually, the paper says that we're allowed to ask questions. I don't know if you know that. It does say that.
We're also allowed to make ourselves heard, so why aren't you guys answering questions? Why are you hiding behind, oh, we're not supposed to do this in this meeting? This is your job, and these are our kids.
And the public deserves now. The public deserves answers.
Because, again, you're, you're live streaming this. Everybody who's not here right now and is watching it, they, they're watching you guys just hide behind protocol. This isn't what we're supposed to do here.
An individual does not answer for the entire board. We would have to collaborate, the collective answer from all seven of us to give you an answer. We cannot do that in open session. We'll do that in closed session, and we'll have an answer for you when you make an appointment with Mr. Johnson.
We shouldn't have to have an appointment for our kids' safety.
That's a process. That's how we're going to handle things here. So I would ask you to make an appointment with the secretary.
Yeah, you want to make an appointment so you can keep shoving everything off.
No, well, we'll make an appointment to discuss the concerns that you have, just like anybody else since I've reached out to us.
Oh, I feel like it's going to be a broader.
I think your time's expired at this point.
And I hope that your guys' time's expired when very elections come around, because none of you should be sitting on this board.
Okay, next, is there anyone else? The next item on the agenda.
My name is J C Brockett. And I just wanted to come before you as also a parent of young children and an employee of the district. It disgusts me that I know that this is happening within the place that I work, and there's really not a whole lot being done about it. Again, I'm a parent also, not only the place, the district that I work at, but the place that I send my kids to. I know that they're not all bad. There are some wonderful, wonderful teachers in this community, in this district. But there's one who we know has done the things that has been accused because it's a DCFS case with the document and everything, and she still is allowed to work with these special education children who are nonverbal, have no, no way of defending themselves, no way of, excuse me, communicating with their parents that something may have happened. I, it just doesn't sit right with me as an employee and as a parent also. I'll let you guys move on.
Before you leave, can I, can I just ask also, since you are an employee, what supervisor have you brought this to the attention of?
I just found out about it yesterday. So I haven't.
And when you did, which supervisor did you take that to?
I did not.
Okay.
Because I knew there was a board meeting today, so I figured I could just bring it straight to the source.
It's been taken through a supervisor, guys.
Right. Exactly.
I was speaking to her.
I also found out about it yesterday on a Sunday, so. Yep.
Thanks, Michaela.
Okay, are there any other? Okay, moving on to the next item on the agenda. Next on the agenda is the financial report.
Looking at fund balance, we're showing a 10.14% decrease over last year with a net fund balance of $24,858,314. And the operating funds, we're showing a decrease of 11.98% over last year with a net total of $21,565,174. For revenue we received in the last month in the ed fund, local revenue, we received $336,827. State revenue, we received $925,541. And federal revenue, we received $128,018. Those expenses over $5,000 are broke out in your packet. The recommendation would be to reimburse the impressed account in the amount of $2,771.01 and the payment of bills in the amount of $1,172,239.97. Do you guys have any questions over the financial report?
Okay, I'm looking for a motion, a second, to approve the financial report to reimburse the impressed account in the amount of $2,771.01 and the payment of bills in the amount of $1,172,239.97.
Motion.
Motion by Chad, second. Second by Erica, roll call. Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
J D S Chad.
Yes.
Desha.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
Could I ask the audience to please stop talking? Thank you. Next on the, the agenda is the consent agenda. In your packet, you have minutes from the last meeting, the special meeting on April 14th, the special meeting closed session minutes, and the curriculum committee meeting on 4/22. Also enclosed is the food, the cafeteria report. The student teachers for next year, we have several at Central for the summer program. I believe there are one, two, three, four, five that are, they're actually short-term practical experience. We'll also have this semester, a short-term practical experience at the junior high, and another one at, in the fall at ELC. And then a student teaching experience in grade five at Central. Fundraisers, your fundraiser list includes, the basketball cheer is doing a popcorn fundraiser from May to June, and they are also requesting to do their formal dress sale in August. Field trips, we have both the high school and the junior high band, no, excuse me, band and choir from the junior high and choir from the high school doing a trip to Six Flags on May 10th. Surplus items, there is one item of surplus, and that is a maintenance van that they would like to sell or auction. And then also includes, included is the summer camp schedule. And it's pretty detailed. I think that we'll probably share that information with the media. There are several camps scheduled, sports camps, FCA camp, cheer camps. It's quite a lengthy list. Take a look at that. Does anyone have any questions regarding the consent agenda and the camp schedule? There being none, I'm looking for a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion by Steve. Second by Andrew, roll call. Jill.
Yes.
J D S Chad.
Yes.
Desha.
Steve.
Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
We have several pieces of correspondence. We've got thank you notes in memory of Clara, Clara Brown, who was a cook for 25 years for the district. Barbara Janson, the mother-in-law of Steve Bone. Mary Ann Roan, mother of Jennifer Patton, a guidance counselor at EHS. Mary Ludwig, the family of Mary Ludwig, who was a teacher at the kindergarten center many years ago. So I'll just pass the notes around for you to read those. Next on the agenda, excuse me, I don't know what's happening in my voice. Next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
First of all, we'll start with the Unit 40 Foundation Report. Their last meeting was held on April 14th at 5:30. Items discussed there were, obviously, the financial report, minutes from the March meeting, scholarships, they had 123 applications for their scholarships, which I think is incredible. It states on here that there are 68 scholarships that will be awarded to the tune of $51,750. That will, the foundation's responsible for $7,500 of that, almost $52,000. Pretty remarkable. There was discussion about, obviously, that event, which I believe is May 1st. So that's this Thursday at 5:00 PM. If you've never frequented that, I would highly encourage you to make your way out there. It's pretty neat. It's a secondary gym at the high school.
One of the board members sent me the invitation yesterday and made sure that all of the board members were invited to that reception on Thursday.
Next is the enrollment. As of the end of March, total enrollment was 2,334 students. This is three more students than the previous month and 48 students more than last year at this time. FOIA information is next. We have 12 FOIA requests in the last month. Many of those were financial records and information from, I think, some state, was it some state requests?
Yeah, there was one state request, and then a lot of them were just getting a list of our current vendors. I'm assuming that they try to solicit them.
I think it's FOIAs that are going out to all districts is what we're referencing there. Seems to be a statewide. Somebody doing some homework on that, who knows? Seems to be a statewide, somebody doing some homework on that, who knows? Next is, last couple summers, we have utilized four, four-day work weeks of 10 hours a day. We're seeking to do that again, starting June 6th, the week of June 6th through the week of July 25th. If the board supports that, if you're okay with that, we would like to move forward again. That's administration and the exempt staff, just like we did in the previous years. Any concerns there? Okay? And then the last piece that I have on here is a 21st Century Grant, has, is, is up and running. After-school program grant, from that, from that grant is up and running. We're starting to, to focus on summer. I do not have a, a great, robust report tonight because registration is still open for the summer process. I can tell you right now that we're up to about 170 students in the school district that are involved in the after-school program. That is Monday through Thursday, roughly 3:30 to 6:00 at various spots throughout the community. We did, this is the second week, that we did add in transportation home. And when we, when we did that, offered that opportunity, I believe it brought on about 60 more students than what we had had originally signed up, 50 to 60. So it's been a really, really good situation for us. I think those students are getting home somewhere between, really, the last couple of nights that I heard on the radio, about 6:30. And I think we start that process right around 5:30, as far as transporting them home. So really, really a neat program. Heard lots and lots and lots of good stories. I've passed those on to the board over the last few weeks. But commend us for, a, as a district, those involved in that process of, of meeting those kids' needs and giving them some more opportunities in the evening. And summer school program, summer program information will be coming in the next week, few weeks. I think that's it for superintendent's report.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is new business, and the first item is a presentation from Damian Schlitz. Welcome, Damian, from BLDD.
Hey, everybody.
Architects.
I told them there early, we didn't have to sit in the front row.
And joined by Damian, are, are you presenting, Ryan?
Just to hear your question.
He's serious. Backup.
Moral support.
Angie, did you happen to have those site plans we can pull up?
Yeah, we probably can.
Okay. Really, we just wanted to kind of give an update kind of on, kind of the overall project timelines. One of the things for discussion this evening is related to the potential new K2 and the siding of that. We've done some study work for that. Shared that out several weeks back, just to kind of give you an opportunity to kind of bull it over a little bit, get a little bit of a feel for that. And really just have some, any dialogue, conversation, any questions and those aspects related to that. Also, we've been working closely with Holland and outlining really the work that's not only beginning to occur right now, like with the work over at Southside Elementary for the temp classrooms, but also starting to set timelines out for the other scopes of work that would occur throughout the district. So first thing I wanted to talk to was the sites, but we can start, I think, with the, the schedules. Currently, we're working through work related to the Southside Elementary. As you've all been made aware, there was some additional work that needed to happen to that campus for some parking, some utility work that needed to occur just because of some zoning considerations and things like that. That's currently under consideration, and we've actually started even to unlock a way to, to utilize a little bit of health, life, safety funding for a portion of that work because of some other work that has to happen on that campus with some water infiltration items. So that's the work that's really, if you will, currently ongoing in the design process. Paving work at Central as well as the high school is ongoing with the intent of that work would actually be constructed next summer. The work at Central became a bit more in-depth than what we thought we could actually accomplish in the summer. We did not want to have it going into school year. There just seemed to be too many considerations there. The high school work, we already expected was going to be kind of a more, kind of a deep dive with the redesign of that parking lot there. So, so both of those campuses would be occurring next summer. The last pieces, and then I'll shift over here to these, and we could get into any deeper detail that you'd like with these timelines as, as you want, is the renovation work at Central Campus. That work, design-wise, will be kicking off kind of later this summer to allow for that work to also be able to occur next summer, as long as everything proceeds as, as the board desires. So we can come back to schedule related to different projects. There's a lot of depth to that, you know, and kind of how things are happening if you have particular questions. But one piece that we really wanted to talk about tonight was the potential siding. We've talked about this for, I don't know, 18 months now? About which site, where your building would go? Would it go at Central Campus? Would it go at the property near the interstate? To help kind of with this dialogue, this conversation, we essentially laid out a study of each. I'll tell you right now, you could probably place the building in a dozen spots on either of these sites. These are two of them. So really just kind of wanted to walk you through kind of some of the thoughts, the dialogue that we went through as we were laying these out. All of this is very much, it looks like it's hard line and all thought through. This is very much what I would refer to as a fat marker drawing. There's still a lot to be thought, you know, thought about with this design, but starts to give you the scale and the layout of the campus. So you can see here with the Central Campus, the existing building's at the top right there of the drawing. And as we started these drawings out, the first thing that we consider is, all right, how is traffic gonna access both buildings and kind of circulate, you know, throughout the campus? You know, kind of in a coherent manner, so the both buildings can function viably. With that, we also are always trying to consider the ability to separate bus traffic from car traffic. So when you got two buildings on a site, you got these two flows of traffic, you don't want four lanes. Then you got buses leaving campus, coming back on, cars leaving, coming back on. So how do you do it in kind of a fluid, fluid way? And that was something we considered with both sites. So with this one here, you can see the red lines there are actually kind of where the bus traffic would enter and exit onto the campus, or sorry, the car traffic. You could loop in off of the main street, loop up through the lot, drop at Central, and then head down to the new facility. Those that are going directly to the new facility would essentially skip that first loop and just be able to head to that new building. One of the things with the parking lots there, you'll see, we're really trying to get ample queuing so that as those cars are lining up, you know, sometimes a couple hours before school even lets out, that people have a spot and that we're not out onto the main road. That'll be a really important consideration as we reform the plan. The bus traffic, on the other hand, we, you know, we have a little bit more control over that. Those are our bus drivers driving those vehicles. So with those, we actually have them coming around the north end of the existing Central Building through that back drive, looping down and around to serve the back building and then heading back out towards the north. They're both, of course, accessing from the east. However, those two flows of traffic aren't needing to cross one another. So gives you some nice access, some nice flow there with how those two can work. Beyond the traffic flow, of course, we'd have deliveries that would also on this, in this case, utilize like the bus lot, you know, that bus lane, kind of around the back to get access for utilities. And then the other piece is we're looking at how the sites are, is just outdoor space. How do we use the space for students? Trying to limit, I know it's currently a consideration where there's that drive in the back of Central and some of the green spaces on the west side of that roadway, if you will. But how do we limit that as much as possible? So with the new K2, you can see a couple of kind of outdoor play areas, essentially directly adjacent to the building, within those rings of, of, of traffic, so not having to cross over those. Also with this site, because we do have the current pond or detention at the northwest there, this site allows that to remain in place. We would likely utilize that in some capacity for, for some of the retainage and, and water control considerations we have to have on the site. So that's why we kind of avoided that. I know in some conversations when Mr. Johnson and I just quickly glanced at these, you know, thoughts about could the buildings be placed right behind each other? Absolutely. Just changes traffic flows, just changes maybe how playgrounds are set up and, and utilized. In this case, it would allow for a pretty defined, at a K1 or, or pre-KK, K1 type of play area, and then a first, second, or just second-grade play area. One other consideration for the plan, this one and in particular the next, is any future expansion as well, which is something that as we look at all these and go through further planning, we'll want, we'll want to consider. You know, is there a potential to add a grade level to the building? Is there a potential to add a second building to the campus, like we'll look at in the next option here? So, oh, they're all just kind of variables that we've been thinking about. So that's the Central Campus, and it's kind of first iteration, if you will. So. Are there any questions on that one before I jump up to the, I'll just call it the interstate property?
Do you have any concern with the elevation of the land there?
No. No, I mean, the realities are, we're gonna touch so much of that site that we're gonna essentially set our 100, which is like the floor level. So there would be soil borings, and there'd be some more extensive, and that's actually one of the next steps, once you're selecting a site, more extensive topography studies, things like that, to make sure that we're not putting it in a hole.
Right.
So, yeah. One thing I didn't mention before, but we, we briefly talked about where utilities are on these sites. There's not a dramatic difference. It's not that one, we've got to bring sanitary from three miles away, and the other one, it's 100 feet away. They're really kind of awash when it comes to that. So really, it would come down to, you know, kind of how much dirt do we have to move? But if you can see how much land is being moved there, just to make the parking lots, there's a lot of regrading regardless of like where we place the building. So then this is kind of the, the other site. This is, I refer to it kind of as the interstate site. And one of the differences here is that the considerations of not only the current K2, but also future expansion if, if Central or any other building were to be replaced. The footprint, don't pay too close attention if not fully developed, we're just trying to show you the expanse, you know, in eight or nine section elementary school for a few grades is, is, got a footprint. That's why we just replicated it there, why reinvent the wheel. It'd be a similar scale of population. But here, you can see, we were able to really accomplish a very similar kind of division of traffic. On the right-hand side to the east, you can see kind of that car traffic getting pulled. We tried to pull it from as far north as possible, just to get away from that intersection, pulling that traffic in and moving around. And then you'll notice in this one, a little bit different, kind of this Central Boulevard with the bus traffic that allows for that flow to, to work up and through the campus.
The high school's over here, correct?
Yes, the, the high schools, yep, just to the east, yeah.
This is Shorman Lane or whatever.
So, this is, this is Paul Fields, right there.
Yes.
Shorman Streets in between them.
Yeah.
This is everything to that field side. Interstate.
Yep, interstate property line is shown, that's, that's the extent of the district's property there. So you'll notice with the Boulevard here, this is kind of more of a loop. You know, you drop at one building with the buses, you could loop around to the other. There's a, there's a dozen ways we could queue buses in a line. It could be in kind of diagonal slots. That's something to discuss further. But you will notice at the very far north end of the property, kind of a dashed area, a, a future access drive, as we think about a second building in the future, the ability to have parent, a parent loop from that same side of campus, a very similar solution to what we did at Central. Again, one of our goals, especially when we have the opportunity to set up a site, quote-unquote, as new, is that we don't have those two entering and exiting campus at the same spot, whenever we can avoid that, buses and cars, just because of, you know, you all have dropped kids, or why are your kids getting dropped off? It just makes for an easier flow and safer flow on the campus. Similar here, we've got exterior play areas. You'll notice on this diagram, however, we have deliberately called out some detention areas because we don't have the existing pond. Those would all have to be ultimately sized with our civil engineers, but are relatively scaled to what would need to happen to that, that first phase of work. So I guess the real, kind of, I guess takeaway is that we feel that either campus can work. It's, it's really, there are other aspects, you know, at play as far as proximity to the rest of the campuses, you know, which, which campus works better for the longer term, and that's, I guess, what this is intending to start that dialogue of consideration. But like I said, I think sketched up three or four different solutions for each of these sites. These were just the two that felt strongest and rather than overwhelming with five partially thought-through solutions, we brought one that worked pretty well, and we could adjust based on feedback. So anything I missed related to site development?
Does anyone have any questions for Damian?
Is there a possibility for a two-story? To spare some land for future projects?
Absolutely, yeah. We often, for these grade levels, try to stay one-story, just because, you know, it's, it's just K through second. Third and up, third through fifth, I become personally a little more comfortable to put them on a second story, just with stairs and the access for, for specials. But it's certainly not out of the question, though, that any building could be, could be thought through in that way.
So I thought it might not be a bad idea to pull back up what you were talking about. Here's the projects list that we're all working off of, including you. That was, everything in green was approved by the board to move forward with potential bids, research of that nature to, to start the process. Three mobile classrooms at the top, that, that, actually will be four mobile classrooms. That should show up on our property May 21st, 22nd, 23rd at Southside. We've been working with these gentlemen extensively on that. There are some topics on here dealing with parking lots and fences and things like that that play into that project as well. Parking lot at the high school, as you can see, and as we shared with you, and I think you just shared a minute ago, would be put off until the 26th summer. So I'm gonna come to you with project authorizations on some of those items at the May board meeting. They were, some of them are ready, but I just got them in the last couple of days. So I said, let's hold off and let this discussion take place tonight. But that would be for the next summer. The north parking lot, we were hoping to get down at Central this summer. That's gonna be pushed off due to some complications we've run into. Sports complex, the library renovations at Central, gym floor and bleachers at Central, and then the new K through two building. Again, we've got that on here as April, but I think we've pushed it to May, possibly for potential movement and, and approval from you, if indeed, because again, we're back to site, wanting to know the site, so they can move forward with bringing a proposal to us and what that looks like. Fence at West Side, that's on the agenda, I believe, to be approved tonight for some of that purchase. Junior high baseball field and pond fence, those were all items. And again, I just bring that up because a lot of that is gonna be pushed off to next summer, but, but we had brought it to you as a phase one, kind of getting things going, and have run into some issues to where we're gonna have to put that off. But there'll be project authorization, proposals coming your way in the coming months to help with the bid process and, and those projects. That's what you were talking about before you got into the site plans here.
Yeah, yep.
Anything else you want me to show them? I think that's pretty much the gist of what we've got going right now.
I think so, and I think as you spoke to the, the site, you know, that's kind of a next piece to that, the big picture. You know, we've generally laid out a, I'm gonna say nebulous plan, it's not site-specific in any way. Once a site's developed, you know, I think some of those conversations about recommendations for two stories and some of that becomes a bit more focused, you know, because the site does impact the building.
Right.
Do you have a question that, just kind of a general concept with the building, that it's cheaper to go up and out? Is that scale with, so maybe we were to do like a K5 building instead of do?
It's not always cheaper to go up and out, just with, because you have to redo elevators, you have to do stairs, you're adding. You think that you're doing the same square footage, but you're actually adding some extra space. So there, there is an economy of scale there that is tough to point at a, at his, that marker drawing, as he called it, on sure. It is that the economy of scale is, it's not always cheaper. Yeah, no, that, that's what I was gonna key into, is stairs and elevators, not only do they cost, but that's also square footage, that's roof over them, that's lighting, that's fire protection. So that's where some of that inefficiency can come in. It really becomes, but it's not prohibitive. You don't not go two-story because you have to pay for a couple of elevators and stairs. You don't go because you don't need to. If we decide that we want to leave more land open, that might be a consideration we, we make based on stewardship of the property we own. If you're building a, you know, 4,000 square foot building, yeah, there's a major impact. We're talking about, you know, building this scale, and I, I don't think it should be the determining factor.
I just think a gymnasium cafeteria, cafeteria, you know, have one of each, so two separate.
Oh, right. Well, one of the things to think about, while there's economy to that, there's only so many hours in a day, in a school day. So let's say we did a K5, you're gonna have at least two gyms because just enough. because just the number of periods of getting kids through there. You know, we're talking about probably a nine-section, eight or nine-section elementary school. So, means every grade, you know, throughout a week, if they're gonna have two days of PE, you're right up against it with only one PE for that many kids, so.
You gotta consider, if you're sharing space with a cafeteria, you have to spend time, you have to set tables up. There's also time you can't have.
Now, there is efficiency in programs like support services because then you've got centralized, you get a lot more efficiency and effectiveness there. You know, library, media, some of those things where you're not in it as repeatedly, you can get some real efficiency there. It's most often personnel. If you get them together, there's a lot more efficiency there than necessarily like, oh, we only have to do one art room. Well, you still have just as many kids. You're just an under one room.
So, in your opinion, architectural and building, do you see one site more beneficial than another?
I was actually, I was thinking about this on my way down, because I knew for certain.
You knew, I was gonna. I mean, because it is, I see, I see what, like, I want for the community for it to be more centralized in town, but I also see a lot of efficiencies with it being at Central. So, I personally am torn because there's so many good things about both locations.
Right. To me, it's a matter of, I don't know what the outlook is for the community as a whole with growth and those types of things, to understand, getting the campuses together makes a ton of sense. But that also is bringing all of your traffic of your community together. So that's the only piece, if in the future, every building was on that corner, I'll just call it. Every student in the, you know, from 7:30 to 8:30 in the morning, everybody in the town is coming to that spot. That's the hang-up I have with that site. But I also see the value of that because you've got extra new gyms across the street from your, you know, just out of the block from your middle school or across the street from your high school. So, I think architecturally, that's probably where you get the most value because you have that, like, after-hour use. You can start to plan some spaces for, like, more general use. Longest-term, like, plan forever, we don't have to move these buildings in 50 years. Central. Does that make sense? I kinda answered it, but there's not like a yes or no, you know, like.
There's pros and cons to both.
Right.
Right. Would you have a question?
That's about the pond.
Oh.
And you're drawing with the pond and you have it moved?
Oh, we just left it. That's where it's at.
Oh, you're gonna lift it there?
Yeah, we just left it at the back. That doesn't mean we can't move it. We just decided not like.
Well, some of it's retention, right?
Yeah, we're gonna have to have detention of some sort. So we just are currently hoping that we can utilize that, yeah.
And just because I am not super well-versed in stormwater retention and movement of water. But at the high school, we have that now. They don't, they're empty. They don't have water in it. And typically, they're not going to have water. They're just ditches per se that are bigger, right?
Yep.
Pardon my ignorance on that.
No, the goal of it, so those that aren't aware, EPA requires that when you develop more than acre, you can't push stormwater off of your property at any faster rate than before you developed it. So essentially, what those ponds or detention basins are calculated as on a 100-year storm, it fills up. It can't trickle out of that faster than it would have run off your site before you developed. So that's how they get sized. And that's why I can't tell you exactly how big it is right now because.
Right, okay. And that also is an issue with the high school parking lot, correct?
With the sports complex, right now, we've run into some concerns there that the original retention process and detention process is not enough.
Right.
That's why we have flooding. So, that would be next summer, go down that road for the high school parking lot and for the sports complex. That would be correct.
And it was also, yeah, I mean, it's just, at Central with the north paving, when we found out what was under that paving, sort of thinking about what we would actually be, we're now affecting it in a manner where we have to think about where the water's going. It was like, wait a second, it's possible there could be more project out there and we're gonna do some storm. It doesn't make sense to just pump the brakes for a second. I'll have to make sure we know the water.
Okay.
South Side's the same thing. We're developing a parking lot.
There's not much land there.
So, yeah, so there's considerations. And these don't have to be huge ditches. These could be just very shallow. They just have to keep the water on your site and let it slowly go off. So, the solution oftentimes, in really big municipal areas, they'll be soccer fields because nice big flat bottom with really good grass. It just depends on.
So I threw up here a couple of other documents to keep focused on because as we move into the next topic, which is the bonds and debt certificates and things like that, not that we're moving there yet, but this, again, was the intent from the get-go. Here is phase one, new K through two building. South Side renovations for the pre-K to potentially move the daycare and the pre-K over there and not rent and pay rent every month for being in that building. Central renovations, high school, central paving. And then, of course, the latest that we've gotta address is with the mobile classroom move, we've gotta potentially consider some new fence because that fence has gotta come down in areas. And then, of course, a parking lot over on the south side to help get parking off of the street for the residents in that area. We've also run into some leaks in the building, in the South Side building this, what, last week, I guess it was?
Right.
We got Damian down here Wednesday or so last week, I think it was, to take a look. We've got some tech pointing situations, issues. We think there is an outside shot that some of that water flow in the back right now is going back up towards the building. So, the point behind when he arrived in our conversation was, the timing might be right for that parking lot, for there to be a parking lot going there and we could come in and grade that up away from the building to help the flow of water. As he was talking about other properties, I don't know if you wanna share just a little bit about that property on the South Side building with that parking lot? If we put a parking lot out there, say, for instance, it was asphalt, you would be putting in a couple detention areas in the parking lot. And with the help of the city, the city's probably gonna need to help us a little bit with maybe some clean-out on those ditches so that more water could be held in the ditches and get it off of the property and not on the other people's properties.
Right, right now, we're able to kind of trade off. They're pushing more water from our paving, but we're collecting some other. So actually, the area that'll be east of the temp classrooms will have a small swale that'll allow for kind of some water to be there if it were a major storm event. Because, yeah, there's just not a lot of real estate there.
Right.
Detention base.
Where is the water issue there now? Is that on the front side or?
No, so actually, what we were looking at was where the storage and boiler room kind of are. They're lower, they're in the grade. I think it's the original, like, 38 building or whatever was originally there. If you're familiar with the building from the South Side, there's like kind of that pavement that goes up between the building. Yep, right there.
Here it is. So there's the South Side building, the area that we're talking about that needs. Right now, we've got some leak. It's leaking into this area here. And then we've had some into some classrooms over in the area too. This whole area here is low and this drainage right here needs to be deeper, which would be something we'd have to work with the city on. But we're looking at possibly coming in and putting a parking lot in this area here. And we pave all the way back up to here and then regrade. CDI has done the site work for us already to regrade that and get that water all flowing away from the building rather than to the building.
We've had an issue with that.
Correct. There's issues in that whole building. We think it may be on to something to solve that through this process. And it might also, we don't know yet, we're looking into health, life, safety funds to possibly handle some of this due to the fact that when you've got leaks, then that could potentially be utilized.
Yeah, I mentioned health, life, safety earlier. That's what I was referencing.
Right.
Because that's for care work, existing conditions, that would give the opportunity to utilize those funding out of the, to cut that, so.
So while we've got it up there, you guys have been involved in this. The mobile classrooms are gonna go right over in this area here.
Yep.
There's gonna be two parking lots, two parking spaces due to the fact that we have to be 25 feet off of the property line, city ordinance. We have to be 25 feet off of the property line. It's gonna take away two parking spots, which is not into the world. It will gravitate out into this area. And we have to put, and we'll be in the process of doing this very soon. Todd got the information today from the mobile classroom folks. We have to put piers in. We'll do that ourselves. We'll build piers that this thing sits on. And we'll come in on May 21st, 22nd, 23rd. And they will set them in here and then gravitate them into here. Our fence has to come down through this area. And when it goes back up, we're proposing that we would fence it all the way around this. We will put in a safety gate so it gives us an extra entrance in for safety as far as that's concerned. Come down to the building and then you have the building, then we come off there and then put in new fence across here and come to basically about here.
Yeah.
We'll come across in this area and then this would all be open for parking lot. This will be fenced off and protected and all of this is protected by that fence. And we're looking at safety fence. We've been looking at that for two years. Don't have, tried to apply for grants. Better government grant, didn't get it. So, we're gonna be in a position that possibly through this project, while we're taking these fences down, that's what I'm asking for us to go ahead and take care of a lot of those other things and get that property be in pretty good shape. It's gonna put us in a position to possibly have around 20 parking spots in this corner to where our staff can come in here and come through instead of all up there coming here or in or this direction coming there. So now we'll be there. We'll get all the parking, many of you probably picked up and dropped off at this building. We've got teachers that have to park here because we don't have space to park them anywhere else. This would be able to get them off of that drive and road and into that area as well. Anything else you wanna add to that?
Nope, I think that covers it. Oh, I do, yes, sorry. Between the, where it's the black playground and where Andy was outlining the new temp, that's where I thought about that there's the opportunity for kind of a low swale to deal with the required detention that we have down on site.
The water technically drains this way.
Yeah, to the left of the playground and right over to that.
The city's got plans someday to do some serious work down there.
The streets aren't in great shape.
Correct, yeah.
Which is not us, but.
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone have any other questions for Damian?
Do I have a question for you guys? Because I saw you were strolling. You're gonna, you have plans for one of the buildings, the other two just set retire. What do you plan on helping with the other two buildings that were supposed to be in the campus?
Which buildings?
You said one of them was possibly being rebuilt to, like, wherever you worked on it. Like the daycare, what are you gonna do with the other buildings that are being retired?
The East Side building, for years, there's been some rumor that St. Anthony has some interest in purchasing that building off of us. Correct.
We have, we would have several pieces of real estate that would be for sale.
I didn't know if they saw on your, you know, where you're working, you know, making like community centers or something for after-school programs like you were calling it.
In all honesty, we've been talking about this for a couple of years. And the board's at a point tonight with the next topic to promote the next moves. If they move forward with tonight and then in May with the bond resolution, then we would be in a position probably by June to be able to make some statements and approach some people to say, hey, they've decided they're gonna do a K through two building. We're gonna vacate this one in two years. It's gonna take us about 18 months to build a K through two building. And then those buildings would be available and we would approach people in the community to see what kind of use they would have for them.
There's a lot of residential areas, so I don't think anybody wants to go out and pick a building.
Correct.
Right.
I would agree. And that's the other piece that I think with the South Side project. It really will help that whole area and that corner really could be cleaned up with the parking lot.
I've been to South Side once and I was trying to come here to Google and ask from your guys' websites to be there and standing here, so.
Yep. And we've tried to correct that and it goes back to it every time we reset it. You didn't need anything tonight. It was just a presentation.
No.
But at what point do they need the board?
I think our intention was tonight was some discussion around this. I think our hopes with timeline that we've talked about with all the other moving parts is that at the next meeting, we'd be able to get some direction of this is the site we're leaning towards. Let's look at developing a little further, answer some more of those questions. So, get some time to chew on it. It's not an all-be-all. It's just, that is a major next step to further develop a building, is to know where it's at.
Did we have a community consensus on that from our community engagement sessions?
Tell them.
I don't think there was a consensus. There was a lot of discussion.
There were a lot of suggestions and the building came from that, those suggestions.
Yeah, the building came from that. The way we asked the question, because we also wanted to be able to study the sites more, was we more asked for which sites are off the table. Neither of these were those off-the-table types of sites, you know, because there were, if you remember, there were half-dozen sites.
Well, there were sites that we didn't have privy to the land, so, I mean.
But, you know, people were like, well, go try it by that. And the community was like, that's a terrible site. Why would we do one? So we just scrapped it. But I think both of these were pretty well-supported. I think there's just, kinda like the conversation earlier, it's other factors than just it's a great site. I just, I feel comfortable that either site can work.
And if you study the population of our students from the very north side to the very south side, being in Edgewood, which is not close to town at all, did we come up with that central point? Did we know what that central point is for the population of our students?
The central point for all of our schools right now, for our demographics, is the, I call it the Mexican ice cream place because I love it. You know where I'm talking about just across the tracks?
By Workman Printing, right? The old subway.
Yes. Is that what it is?
Yep.
Yeah, that's before me. But that's truly about the central point. When we ran, had Lakeland folks run some geography stuff on that, that's where it's centered out at for all.
That's interesting. So, the high school is not Central.
Not that far off and South Side's not.
I mean, if you're in town, everyone thinks Central's so far out. But with new roads that we have and wider roads even from the lake, it's not as bad to get to Central.
I think in our, the difficulty that I see is, to me right now, long range and long past probably most of us, maybe some of these high school kids be involved in some of it. But that building, if you went 100 years old for buildings, the building at Central's about 50 years old, right? So we got another 50 years now. So if you're waiting 50 years to come to town, do you put something out there? Or do you put it out here that the idea is in 50 years, you put a three-through-five building right next to your K through two building that's out here by the interstate?
That is now 50 years old.
That's now 50 years old.
Yeah.
Right. So that's the pieces to this. You know, the fortunate part is, the next piece that we're gonna talk about with the bonding and the debt certificates, you're only looking at 20 years. I know 20 years is a long time. But when we're talking about planning for the buildings and the structures that I don't think's been discussed in this history, when you look at, the high school's really, truly one of the next buildings that probably needs to be dealt with, with it being 85 years old. Yep. I mean, just from a structural standpoint, there were things done to it when they did the remodels, but there's also some other things. Now, if that's not the piece and you want to skip and take a building that's actually 25 years less old and jump, you can do that. And philosophically, again, I don't think it matters, but that's kind of the direction of where you're going with what you do. Whether you put it out there, you know, we've talked about this property here. We could possibly look into buying. We could look into some property, I mean, there's lots of different places. there's lots of different places that were considered, but we own these two. Okay? It's a lot cheaper if you own them. This one right here would be pretty expensive to go get a hold of. Actually, they're all expensive to hit a hold of right now. So.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you. I didn't get the memo, Andy, but red.
But red. You now know, anytime you show up here.
I stick around. I'm going to move away from Mike.
I would, I would maybe ask you guys to wait for the next one at least and tell you to take off.
Yeah.
And if we, and if we want to tie Ann Noble with Steeple in, she's in Chicago, and I can dial her in. But if you don't have any questions, because we've had her present already, we can just move forward.
And I've had lots of conversations and questions with Andy, so I don't have any at this point. So that is item B is what you're speaking of. Okay.
And I think probably for the public's sake, we probably ought to just at least burst them. There's no action for B right here, partly because we have a gentleman in the back that's going to be seated as a board member after a while. And working with bonding council, they highly encourage us to make sure that the new board member is seated before that action item would take place because that new board member's going to be heavily involved in the decisions moving forward surrounding debts and bonds and budgets and lots of other things. So that's why it's on here as a discussion item. Let me share some of that.
Yeah.
So basically, in a nutshell, what we're doing, and I think if you were here at the last board meeting, Ann Noble with Steeple was here to present. Boards asked a lot of questions over the course of the last month, but I've reached out to her. And we're in a situation that I've asked the board to seek working cash bonds, health, life, safety bonds, just about any bond we can get a hold of, to be honest with you, to the tune of about $55 million, to do projects. And we would, we would ask that at the May 19th board meeting. But in the meantime, before you would do that, debt certificates are almost like a bridge loan. Okay? There is a petition period with working cash bonds. So in the meantime, you have to seek the debt certificates. And we're asking the board tonight to approve to seek, not to exceed $37 million in general obligation debt certificates, limited tax, Series 2025 for the purpose of building, building and improving district facilities. This would put the board in a position to move forward with coming to the next board meeting with a resolution to seek working cash bonds up to $55 million. The district has bonding liability of about $72 million right now before the next levy would run, because if the next levy, if it stays course with what's been happening, that bond capacity will increase, meaning that the district could go out and seek, you know, potentially $75 million worth. Does not mean that the board has to go get $75 million or $55 million, but they are, they would be in a position that they put. We talked about a $48 million project a year ago. That project is more expensive today than it was a year ago. We have some other concerns in the district that can be tied into this bond if indeed this were to go through. So I'll stop there and see if anybody has any concerns, comments, thoughts, based on that.
Will we be facing any tax increases if the amount does go, if the break amount does go up to the
Yeah.
A million?
Yeah.
Are you going to buy a ballpark idea of how much?
Yeah, I think, was it 30 cents? I think it was 30 cents. We estimated it to be about 13% the first year if it went full $55 million. Now, here's the piece that you got to understand too, is that's all affected by the EAV, the property values. We estimated, and with Steeple estimated conservative, of about a 3% increase in EAV. We've been averaging almost four, a little over four and a half percent for about the last 15 years. The last few years have been 9%, 12%. I mean, it's high. So if it goes high, the value goes high, then obviously our, our bonding expectation for the taxpayer goes down. So it's a really, say it's a crap shoot. We, it's hard to estimate, but we've tried to go on the conservative side and say, hey, it's probably looking at about a 13% increase, but this is where it could potentially fall. I can tell you that I asked these gentlemen to give me a ballpark pay-down schedule so that the board could consider, instead of going out and getting $55 million like in August for a project that's going to take three years, we don't really need that $55 million until we get to the end of the project. So we would hopefully go get 37 million on the front end and then wait 18 months, two years, whatever, and go get another 18 million. Because we have, if this all went through as proposed, they would have three years to be able to go get that money. Can also tell you that the debt certificates, from Ann Noble's standpoint, she's reached out to multiple banks in this community, and they have all shown an interest in picking up the debt certificates, which is showing community support on their end. One bank is interested in all of it, and we have multiple banks interested in pieces of it. And the one agreement that I told them was, if we went with one bank, spoke on behalf of the board, if we go with one bank that takes on the 37 million, we will put that money in their bank because they deserve the right to make the interest off of that money that we had to go get that they went and got for us. If that makes sense. It's not like our home budgets, trust me. Our home budgets are a whole lot easier to deal with than this.
Andy, also, would you, in the interim, if the 1% sales tax would perhaps pass, then what?
If the 1% sales tax was ever back on the ballot, and it were to pass, I would ask this board to create a resolution that would state that you would pay X amount of, say for instance, 90 to 95%, because I think you can only spend about 95% of it, of the revenue that would come in every year to abate and pay off this bond or the bonds. Because truly what that will do is, go ahead.
I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Truly what that would do is, it would take it back to where it is, the 13% I'm talking about, and some probably. It probably would drop, but again, we don't know 100% without knowing the property value increases.
We can't bank on the 1% sales tax either, but can we pass that resolution even if it's ever a future consideration?
Oh, yeah.
So that, I'm thinking ahead to future boards, because we all won't be on the board if that ever comes on the ballot again. We would want to make sure that those proceeds went.
So you're saying, because even without the 1%, could you put in place, if the 1% ever passed? I would have to check into that, because not, with it not already being in existence, I don't know.
Yeah, or something like that.
Yeah. We did it at Jasper County, once it passed, then the board took action and said, X amount will be dedicated for the abatement of property taxes used for X, Y, and Z. It's the only piece that the board has that can really truly show the public that you're committed, because to reverse it, it would have to be a board resolution to reverse it, to take it back off after you've already said, this is what the money's dedicated to every year.
Does anyone have any other questions regarding, so this is only discussion, there is no action at this meeting?
Now, the action item on this one will be moved, is moved all the way till we seat the new board at the end of the meeting, and that is the, well, I guess there's a couple of items on there, but that is a big item that is on there for the new board tonight to move forward.
Okay.
Good?
Thank you.
Thanks. Great questions.
Okay, next item on the agenda is the IESA membership renewal. Annually, the district must renew its membership with IESA. The fees are $1,715. And attached, you have the renewal forms. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion, a second, to approve the district's annual membership to IESA for the 25, 26 school year.
Motion.
Motion by Chad, second, second by Erica, roll call.
Jane, yes, Chad.
Yes.
Yes, you.
Steve.
Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes. Next on the agenda is the fee schedule for the 25, 26 school year. It's pretty long. Does anybody have any questions?
Very minimal changes.
I don't, I see red, but I'm thinking that red would be a change, but it doesn't look like a change to me.
Right.
There are some more detailed fees for replacement parts for laptops.
Yeah.
If kids lose power cords and have to have their keyboards replaced and that sort of thing, those fees have changed. Any questions, comments? I'm looking for a motion, a second, to approve the 25, 26 fee list as presented.
Motion.
Motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Erica, roll call.
Chad.
Yes.
Yes, you.
Yes, Steve.
Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
Andrew.
Jill.
Yes.
Jane, yes.
Okay, next on the agenda is the Lakeland College dual credit classes. They're, we're looking to approve doing away with the $25 fee for dual credit classes, which is a reduction from years in the past, but Lakeland College is not charging us any longer, so we will no longer charge our students. Does anyone have any questions?
If you know folks from Lakeland, please reach out and tell them thanks, because they're, they're eating a cost there that's, I mean, this is for the whole area. This isn't just not for our school district. This is the whole area they're doing. So, pretty impressive.
Thank you to Lakeland College. I'm looking for a motion, a second, to approve, to remove the current $25 fee for dual credit with Lakeland College.
Motion.
Motion by Andrew.
Second.
Second by Chad, roll call.
Erica.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Jane, yes, Chad.
Yes.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Okay, we tabled from the 1/27 meeting, the approval of the intergovernmental facility use agreement with the city of Effingham in the event of an emergency. Those, that's been in your packet for quite some time. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, I'm looking for a motion, a second, to approve the intergovernmental facility use agreement with the city of Effingham in the event of an emergency. Motion? Motion by Andrew.
Second.
By Erica, roll call.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Jane, yes, Chad.
Yes.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
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 Okay, so we, next on the agenda is the approval of the instructional materials purchase. We had at our curriculum meeting, a lengthy presentation by Shellbeck, our curriculum director with the district. This rotation covers social studies, K through five, social studies, six through eight, social studies, nine through 12, which is several courses at high school. Online subscriptions for a program called Lexia Core Reading, Dreambox Advanced Math Package, that's an online description, or subscription in IXL. And then also a physical performance training for grade eight, and an internship course for grade 11 and 12. Instructional materials are on a, what is the?
Seven years.
Seven-year cycle. So this year, in seven years from now, social studies will get revisited again. So, and those online subscriptions. The total, and that, this is budgeted in, so it isn't a huge surprise, is $418,000 and some change. Does anyone have any questions about the textbooks and the implementation? There being none, I'm looking for a motion, and a second, to approve the instructional materials for a total cost of $418,000, $3.42.
I'll make it.
Motion by Jane, second by Andrew, roll call.
Jill.
Yes.
Jane, yes, Chad.
Yes.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
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 Okay, the fencing project, the Central Pond fence will be replaced by Lance Dozenbrock and the West Side School fence by Effingham Fence Company. Those projects were briefly touched upon in the south side presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
We were going to do those ourselves, but we were running out of manpower, especially with the mobile classroom project, because it's a little more in-depth than what we thought. So we've got those bids. That's what we're asking for.
Okay. And I am looking for a motion, a second, to approve the fencing projects of the Central Pond by Lance Dozenbrock for $26,960. And the West Side Fence by Effing- West Side Fence or South Side Fence?
It's West Side.
Oh, West Side's fenced, yes. Okay, West Side Fence by, for $19,600.
Motion.
Motion by Chad.
Second.
Second by Erica, roll call.
Jane, yes, Chad.
Yes.
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 Steve.
Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda, the agenda is the Glass &amp; Shuffit, the approval to allow them to perform our fiscal year '26 audit. Annually, the board approves an auditor, Glass &amp; Shuffit Limited, to complete the FY '26 audit, which includes a 133 and a GATA audit. Multiple employees spend five days in the district to complete this requirement. Does anyone have any questions? I'm looking for a motion, a second, to approve Glass &amp; Shuffit to complete the district's FY '26 audit at a cost not to exceed $32,450.
Motion.
Motion by Steve, second by Andrew, roll call.
Chad.
Yes.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Jane, yes.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion, a second, to enter into closed session. One item is the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the district. The other item is student disciplinary cases, and the last item is litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which, in which case, the basis for finding shall be recorded and entered in the minutes of closed meeting. Do I have a motion to enter into closed session? Motion by Andrew, second. Second by Erica, roll call.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Erica.
Yes.
Andrew.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Jane, yes, Chad.
Yes.